All right, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Brian, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
The United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. All right. So, um, do you guys want me to wait for Bert? Do you want me to keep going, or do you want me to do?
We can wait.
Okay. Good morning. All right. So, Lander County Commissioners may take break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled from, um, or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, seminars, um, attended. Patsy?
Thank you. Um, I did attend the Kingston Town Board meeting on the 20th of December. Um, just, uh, general things going on there, and they're working on the budget. And then we did have the Austin Airport Advisory, um, meeting on Monday, the 10th. And fortunately, our Public Works Director was there, and I always appreciate that with all the, the input with things that are running on schedule and the things that we've got, uh, planned, um, that are working fine, so all well. Thank you.
Well, we almost had a pull-off meeting, but, uh, Dan had a hydraulic line break, and he was froze up, so maybe next month.
Okay. So, uh, I did attend the Hospital Board meeting, the Leader Board, and LEPCE. Um, nothing standing out hugely on any of those, just standardized meetings. And so, um, that's what I've done.
Nothing.
Okay. So, going with staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
I have, I have nothing. It's all on the agenda.
Okay. Very good. Easy. So, for public comment, for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make, um, comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. Any discussion of those comments, uh, at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? All right. Not seeing any. We'll move forward for, under the consent agenda.
Muted.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon, uh, by the board, the county commissioners, with one action without extensive discussion. Uh, any member of the board or any citizen may request, um, that an item be taken from the agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one.
Unmuted.
Approval of January 13th, 2022 meeting, uh, agenda notice, excuse me. Number two, approval of October 14th, 2021 meeting minutes. Number three, approval of October 28th, 2021 meeting minutes. Number four, approval of November 18th, 2021 meeting minutes. Number five, approval of November 30th, 2021 special meeting minutes. Number six, approval of December 6th, 16th, 2021 meeting minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change requests.
I'll make the motion to approve items one and two.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so Brian made the motion. Art, uh, Patsy seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good, moving forward. So, under number one, uh, for discuss- oh.
Is your mic on?
Mine's on. Supposed to be on all the time. Yeah.
She's not hearing you guys through the online.
The one upstairs is off, so I'll check.
I just want to make sure.
Okay. So, do you want me to hold off?
Um, let's, can you touch on one of the colors and see if they, can she hear us? Oh, yeah, it was here fine. Okay. Must be something she has up her computer.
Okay.
I just wanted to be sure.
All right, very good. All right, for, um, number one, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills, except I'm going to be pulling out checks number 214071, 214153, 214218, uh, and 214260.
And also, I have one, 214152.
Okay.
If you pull that one.
24?
214.
214.
Okay. So, we'll pull that one as well? So, aside from that, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the balance of the bills.
Second.
All right. So, Patsy made the motion, art second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I now make a motion that we approve the, uh, checks number 214, 218, 214153, 214071, and 214260.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
All right. So, Patsy made the motion, art second. All in favor? Aye.
I abstain. They're made to my employer.
Okay. And so then this, um, I didn't-
Which number was it?
I don't think I-
What's your number, Patsy?
152.
2 what?
214. They're all 214.
152?
Right.
I'll make a motion, we approve 214152.
Second.
So, Brian made the motion, art second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. And I abstain. That is per deum.
Moving forward. So, for number two, all right, so for possible action to elect a Chair and Vice Chair to the Lander County Board of Commissioners for the 2022 calendar year.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Ancho as our Chair this year.
I didn't hear you, Patsy.
Commissioner Ancho. To remain as our Chair.
I think, I would think that, um, somebody else. What? Where were you going?
Oh, I was going to nominate Art.
Okay. So, what? So, on Patsy's, um, is there a second on Patsy's? All right, without a second, we'll go with, um, um, a second nomination.
What was your nomination?
I nominate, uh, Art.
I'll second the motion. I think it's probably only fitting, it's his last year, so.
Yeah, so we're going, uh, JR nominate Art. Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. So, we have a Vice Chair?
I'll make a motion, and we nominate, uh, JR Thomas as our Vice Chairman.
Second.
So, um, Brian nominated JR. Art second. All in favor?
Aye.
Does it work?
It's hard, but we're-
Yeah, she's breaking up.
Happy for you, knowing one that breaks up when she talks. Everyone else is fine. She ended up maybe your phone.
My speaker, well, the speaker's on all the time, so I'll just bring it closer to me. So, is that, um, see if that sounds better?
You want the speaker on on the phone, or just the handset off?
No, I think it's fine. Oh, yes, I think that's it.
So then, Art, okay. All yours.
Yeah.
Yes, I see this one in the volume.
Item number three. For possible action to appoint Lander County Commissioners to the following areas, 2022 Boards. Category, do we want to just keep our same boards? Okay. Hey, category one, Lander County Board of Equalization.
I sit on that one. We'll continue to.
You want to stay there? Okay. No objections? Lander County Convention and Tourism? Who's on that?
I sit on that.
You want?
I sit on it as an alternate. I'll stay on it.
Okay. Lander County Debt Management Commission?
I sit on that.
You want it?
You want it.
Okay. Lander County Planning Commission? We don't have anybody on that end. That's right. Yeah. Right. Right. Okay. Five, Lander County Regional Transportation Commission.
I actually sit on that, but we haven't had any, uh, we didn't have any meeting last year at all, but I'll sit on it again if you'd like me to. Okay.
And JR.
Might be something coming up.
Uh, category two, Lander County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife.
Well, there's no designated commission on it, but I know that I said I would try to attend meetings. We weren't able to attend any of this. Does anybody else want to try to attend those meetings, the water?
No, so they won't.
I mean, we don't, it's not required by current our assets, no?
No. No, just an advisory position. Okay, C, category three, Austin Airport Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Uh, Battle Mountain Livestock Event Center Advisory Board. JR? Local Management, Local Emergency Planning Commission? I was on that, but we haven't had any, any meetings.
LEPCE, LEPCE, we've been having, it's for, um, we've been having LEPCE meetings.
LEPCE meeting? Yeah, okay, that's.
So, yeah, I sit on that.
And, okay, Lander County Economic Development?
That's leaded, so I sit on that one.
Okay.
Who's, uh, who's the alternate?
Okay, Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission? I'm on that, and JR is the alternate. And when we have meetings, you show up, over show up. Uh, Lander County, D, category four, uh, Lander County Conservation District?
I was pointed to it, but, or I was elected to sit on, but I haven't been able to, I can't, it just seems like we've got something coming up. But, anybody else want to add?
You want that, JR?
I can keep it and make a better effort to try to get to some of the meetings, but.
You want to keep it, I'll be the alternate.
Okay, and then, and then, uh, okay, and then I'll try to stay in conversation with you. Because that's, that's my downfall.
Okay. Lander County Hospital District? You have that one. Lander County Safety Committee, that's the committee I was on, and we haven't had any meetings, because there hasn't been any accidents. We still have that committee, Bert? Okay. Right. Bert? Okay. Central Nevada Regional Water Authority? That's JR. Who's the alternate?
We don't have an alternate. We have two that represent.
Two, okay.
So, JR and I were on that one.
JR and Patsy?
Right.
Uh, Department of Energy Board of Representatives? Do we have anybody on that?
Yes, um, every once in a while, they, they come up with something, but they haven't the last couple of years, but I still, I'll stay the representative on that.
Humboldt River Basin Water Authority? Okay. Okay. Uh, State Lands Use Planning Advisory Committee, I'm on that. JR is the alternate. Nevada Works, I'm on that, and I don't know who the alternate is.
Well, it says, on which one was it? Nevada Works?
On, uh, State Lands. Lands Use. Uh, we need an alternate. Pool pack.
The next one?
Yeah, yeah. I was on pool pack, too. Yeah, yeah. Those last three I was on. I've never heard anything from Pool Pack for a year. Not a thing.
Problem has been, their meetings have been the same time our commission meetings, on the same day, and they've never done that before.
Same with the Nevada Rail Coalition, their meetings are the same time they're meeting as well.
But we have a representative when we can go. Maybe they'll look at that. Maybe you could ask them about that, when you turn in his name.
Um, okay, so that's the end of three, going to four. Do you, do we want to have a litigation meeting now?
So, we make a motion to approve all of, right? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve, um, that we appoint all of the previous information identified to the Lander County Commissioners that will be sitting on the 2022 Advisory Boards.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just go to the next item.
Breathe.
Vote?
No, you just had the motion, and I was waiting for you to make your vote. Everybody else left.
Everybody voted, yeah. Yeah, and I said all in favor.
All in favor?
I do hear that. Aye, thank you.
And then, yeah, if you want to, if you want to have a litigation meeting, we need to discuss union negotiations that are coming up. It's not convenient, real quick. Here are your two things to take some time. So, I don't know if you want to kind of right now, we can do it anytime, because it has nothing to do with-
Didn't do with any of the agenda.
Okay. Okay, let's do it, let's do it.
Because it's going to take some time going through all three issues.
Yeah, I don't want to hold these people up. They've got work to do.
Probably better.
Okay. Number four, Porter Group. Status and update on the Lander County Land Management and Conservation Act and other federal activities that are being pursued on behalf of the county. Porter Group.
Um, they're going to be on the phone, so I'll have to, I mean, if anyone has to talk right now, we'll just get, we'll just say, call in.
Okay.
Good morning. Uh, this is Chris Porter. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Is this better?
Because our phone system is, uh, is pretty tough. That's, so if you don't mind, you're going to have to talk kind of slow and, uh, and very clear.
Unmuted.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good morning. This is Chris Porter.
Morning.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Good morning. Um, thank you, thank you so much for having us. Uh, Chair, um, Eric Clark, congratulations, and Vice Chair Thomas as well. Um, I wanted to, uh, again, thank you for letting us have this opportunity, and of course, working, uh, for you back here in DC, um, along with your team, um, for Ramos and Anna and Caitlin and Paula, and of course, Aaron Martinez, the newest member. It's been a pleasure. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to kick it off. I'm going to introduce, uh, Congressman John Porter, uh, to give just kind of a lay of the land, what's happening back here in DC, maybe talk about the elections a little bit upcoming, kind of where we're at, and then I'll have him turn it back to me to talk about, uh, the status of the lands bill, um, and of course, uh, the appropriations and the earmark process moving forward. Uh, so, um, also my father, Congressman Porter, uh, the Florida Reserve. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Muted.
Echo, must be the-
Unmuted.
-DC echo. Uh, I'd like to really begin by saying, as Chris has, we are honored to be a part of the team and appreciate it very much. Are you, uh, getting the same echo that we are?
I'm asking if you're getting the same.
Yes. Yes, we are.
I can't hear you.
Yes, we are getting the same echo.
Is he not on there anymore, Chris?
Uh, he should still be on. Are, are you, we have a pretty bad echo on our end as well. I don't, I don't know if you're receiving it as well.
Okay, well, he was caller nine, and he's not there anymore, so he dropped off.
Okay. Well, what I'll do, then, I'll just start giving an update on the lands bill, and hopefully he'll reconnect with us, and then he can give the lay of the land otherwise. I'll, uh, I'll be happy to give that as well, but I think the most important item for the county, um, of course, uh, is the, uh, lands bill that we've been working on. Um, I wanted to give a quick background, kind of where, where we're getting from and where we are today, uh, also our most recent conversation, uh, with Senators off today. So, uh, so Lander County Lands Bill was reintroduced on August 28th, uh, by Senator Rosen, in its, uh, Senate Bill 1411. Uh, shortly after that, um, well, not really shortly, but a few months later, um, Congressman Amadee, uh, reintroduced larger Northern Nevada lands package in September next week, uh, which does include Lander County Lands Bill as a provision of that package, um, also includes the Fallon Range Training Complex, uh, Douglas County Lands Bill, County Lands Bill, just a few. Um, Congressman Amadee, when they were negotiating the most recent Defense Authorization Act of the one that happened last year, he tried to include the Northern Nevada lands package, um, as an amendment to the larger, uh, larger, uh, factors.
Chris?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Chris, we can't understand you here.
Can you talk a little slower and make sure you're not on speakerphone?
Yeah, certainly, does it, how is this? Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, try again.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, yeah, okay, no problem. Uh, technology's great. Um, so, I guess I will start, um, back where, um, back on April 28th, um, Senator Rosen reintroduced the Lander County Lands Bill, um, which is Bill Number S1411. Then in September, um, Congressman Amadee introduced the companion bill, or at least the provision, in part of the larger Northern Nevada lands package, and that bill number's HR5243. Um, the Northern Nevada lands package does include other bills in there, uh, lands bills like the Fallon Range Training Complex, uh, the Douglas County Lands Bill, Persian, uh, Persian County Lands Bill, just to name a few. What Congressman Amadee tried to do back in September is include the Northern Nevada lands package as an amendment to the National Defense Authorization Act. Um, it was one of 800, maybe up to 1,000 amendments on there. Un- unfortunately, um, it did get kicked out, uh, of that, but it was at least, uh, an effort on his part to make that happen. Moving into October 19th, um, the Senate Bill S1411 had a hearing, um, in the Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources, just to put it on record. Um, it is Senator Cortez Masto's committee that she sits on. Um, at that time, the committee and the Forest Service that was present, uh, present had no issues with the legislation, and it, it just went through, um, as normal, which was a, it was a great success, and at least gets us to the next phase. Um, still talking about Senator Rosen's, uh, version of the lands bill. Um, Senator Rosen's staff did meet, uh, with, uh, back in December, the Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources, along with the Bureau of Land Management, to go over, uh, to go over the legislation. They did have a few questions, um, regarding the legislation, um, which would, uh, they asked about the mineral rights provisions in there, the water-related conveyances, um, historic, uh, potential historical designations on certain parcels. And they also asked for a more detailed narrative of the parcels that the county plans to have conveyed to them. Now, I will preface that this is, is absolutely normal. Um, the folks back on the East Coast don't understand what public lands are. Uh, they think, uh, a public park is considered public land, so when we're dealing with the committee staff, you know, along with the members and senators, um, they just don't understand Western issues. Um, they're concerned about, you know, when they talk about mineral rights, they're concerned that we're going to be, you know, in some sort of open mining on those locations, um, as opposed to maybe moving dirt around, uh, for roads and other, uh, infrastructure-type projects. So, what we did is, we met with Senator Rosen's staff yesterday, along with your team at the county, um, to go over and get some more clarification on those, um, those questions that, uh, BLM and also, uh, the Energy Nat-, uh, and Natural Resources Committee staffers did have. Um, there are still some outstanding items that the BLM does own the Senator's, owes the Senator's office, that will help us better answer the questions that the BLM and the Natural Resources Committee has. So, your team, um, including, uh, Mr. Ramos, uh, Anna, Caitlin, uh, Paula, and, uh, Aaron were included on that call, and we're putting together the information that we have now, and then also we'll be meeting with, uh, Senator Rosen's staff again next week, uh, till, to continue this conversation and talk about some other items. So, our hope is that we can get a lot of movement on this by the end of the month, or maybe, uh, the middle of February, so we can get it cleaned up, uh, with DNR and BLM, so then we could, um, move forward to get a markup on the Senate bill. Now, the House will then also need to hear the bill, but once we have the Senate provisions in place, we will then be able to go to them, and I, I think they're basically going to have the same questions as the Senate Committee has jurisdiction. So, we will then, um, hopefully have most of their questions already answered. I wouldn't be surprised if we hear a few more on their end, but we should be, once we get the Senate on board, the House should follow, uh, without much complication. Now, for the future, moving forward of the bill and the next steps, once we get it passed both committees, um, the Senators plan, and as a whole with the delegation of Nevada, they're targeting, um, this year's National Defense Authorization Act to include all Nevada's lands bills in one minibus that could be attached to the National Defense Authorization Act, or one of the appropriations bills, um, and both of these are must-pass bills, uh, by Congress. Um, so that's what the goal is, at least in their minds currently. Um, they're also looking for other potential avenues, um, on must-pass bills that we can include this legislation on, but I think that we're making great progress and, uh, working with your team, getting these questions answered. your team, getting these questions answered. I think that, um, we'll be able to get this handled, um, uh, post date.
So a couple of points on the federal
And I hope you all can hear me okay.
What's that? Yeah, I had a couple of questions on the, on the, the bullet points here under federal representation. There was one bullet point that said Porter Group assisted the county in answering Senator Cortez Masto's questionnaire regarding the infrastructure bill. So my question, did, I never seen a list of questions or a questionnaire. Did any of the other commissioners? So I'd be interested in knowing about that, since it was, uh, you assisted us. And then it also, uh, another bullet point, Porter Group spoke with the county regarding the vaccine mandate and updated them on workplace vaccination rules. Who in our county did the Porter Group speak with? And if there was discussion on that, why wouldn't we include it in an email or have some information recording that? And also on the, uh, bullet point where it says, uh, updated the county on the Biden House America Reducing Homelessness Initiative. I didn't, I was not aware of any of that or heard any information on any of that stuff, so that's my question.
Uh, understood, sir. Um, we have, uh, regular calls, uh, with, uh, county staff, uh, every other week, uh, where we have, uh, we update them on what's happening back here in D C.
Uh, county staff, can you?
And so those would have been the, um, opportunities to update us.
I do remember getting an email asking if we would like to be involved individually, and I responded yes, but I've never, you know, seen anything or heard anything since then either. So what county staff are you meeting with on the phone?
I'm, I'm meeting with Anna, Panola, Caitlin, and also Paula, um, from time to time to talk about the land bill.
So, well, so basically, I, I don't see how any of the S, those staff would have anything to do with vaccine mandates or workplace vaccination rules.
I think we need to update our telephone list on who they are, uh, speaking with every month.
Yeah, and then important issues like this, I mean, I'd like to be included on it as a commissioner.
Understood. Happy, happy to include you on any and every call, sir. Uh, moving for, I guess, moving forward, uh, for the commission, um, what would be the best avenue for us to, should we just, uh, include all the commissioners' emails on, um, on our scheduled calls? What would be the best avenue for us?
Well, yeah, definitely that. And then definitely include our county manager in all those correspondences.
I, I would like, maybe if you guys could pick a couple of commissioners and so we don't have a whole quorum on the call, maybe we could do that. Um,
I'll be available.
Just for open meeting law.
I would like to be available for those calls.
Okay. So may, maybe if you can include Art Clark and Brian Sparks on that chain. And if you don't, then we will have Caitlin, um, add them to that chain for, for these meetings. And if we can get some bullet points of what the, the topics are, um, a little, little bit ahead of time would, would be great because I was unaware of the vaccine mandate type of stuff. I was, I was aware that we were doing some lands bills, but I did not know that it went any deeper than that. So that, that's, that's my fault, not yours.
Understood. Understood.
Thank you.
Yep, you, you're welcome.
Ted, can they include more than just two commissioners on that?
Well,
If they're just listening in, if they aren't?
If they just listen in, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We, we will forward them on and we just won't have any correspondence during the, during the meeting. You guys would be informational only to the commissioners? That way everybody can be involved and, and hear it straight from the horse's mouth, possibly?
You guys cannot respond to that at all, if there's more than two commissioners.
But we could, but we could bring it back to the meeting and make our response. Yes. You bet.
Well, you can have all five of them. The thing is, just don't respond.
We'll, we'll all be on the list. We just cannot respond so that there's no
Because then you're discussing with four of the commissioners.
Yeah, we'll add all of you and then, and then any discussion needs to take place, we'll put it on the agenda.
And then we are also more than happy to, to, uh, give more updates at commission meetings as well.
Yeah. I, I would really appreciate it if you could come to the meetings, Commissioner Clark, because the system just doesn't work very good for listening. If there's echoes and there's breakups and all that, so we're losing parts of the conversation. I'd really appreciate it if you would come. I know that travel is somewhat of a pain, the Battle Mountain, but, uh, you know, we need you here.
Yes, sir, understood.
Chris, are, are you in Washington, D.C.?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you have any local representatives in Nevada that could come?
Um, most of our work is done, um, in D.C., of course. Um, we could have some local representation or we can make, definitely make arrangements to attend in person.
Yeah, we don't want a big travel bill.
Well, at least, I mean, at least maybe once or a couple times a year, not every time, but, yeah.
And, and just so the commission knows, we're starting to kind of funnel things in a little bit better and it's starting to come together. Where hopefully we can get Porter Group to start putting in for some grants and doing some other things for us. I know we spend quite a bit of money, um, for this lands bill, but they have a ton of other opportunities and a ton of things that they can add to it that actually makes them worth their weight. Um, I don't feel, and I don't mean this as, as a shot against Porter, because we haven't, we haven't been the one executing what they can execute. Now we're, we're realizing what the capabilities they have and the, and the connections that they have that could possibly get us some grant funds and some other things that we're going to start pursuing in the future, that I think is going to be a big benefit to the county. But it's taken a little bit to understand how that actually works.
Also, I think too, by us attending these phone meetings that we have, it'll keep us more updated, where we're not just, you know, like we're having this presentation now and just a lot of questions.
I agree.
How much time would you need in advance to, to know that we would like you to be here physically?
Um, I, I think that, I think when, if you need us there, we're happy to come anytime. I mean, a few days, of course, would be, would be great. Um, uh, but again, we're, we're here, uh, as you need us.
A few days? Okay. Okay. So, well, um, we can give you more than a few days and, um,
That would be appreciated for, for air travel anyways.
He, he said that would be appreciated.
Yeah, yeah. Bert, Bert can take care of that. The next time we need an update, we'll try to get you here physically, I think would be a big advantage, especially for us older people that don't hear so good.
Happy to do it, sir, and understood.
So do we want to discuss a time in the future to have these folks? No? Okay. Okay.
So is Congressman Porter going to, uh, speak or is he on the phone right now?
I think he, I think he is on.
Congressman Porter, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Muted.
Oh, I, I understand
Unmuted.
...with the, uh, technology, but if I can reinforce what Chris was saying, we're happy to be there anytime, uh, anyplace, uh, at your convenience. Uh, we are looking forward to a lot of activity and, and continued activity in twenty-two. Uh, a lot's happening with the election year. Uh, a lot of changes are going to be happening, but just know we're always available and look forward to, we'd much rather be there in person, believe me. We'd rather be home, so we look forward to that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Any more questions? I don't think we have any more questions.
Thank you, Congressman. We appreciate it.
Please be safe, everyone. We miss you and look forward to seeing you in person.
Muted. Unmuted.
Item number five, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the proclamation declaring January twenty-twenty-two is National Radon Action Month. Do we have anybody here for this? We used to have somebody.
Um, Cooperative Extension often gave us the information on it, you know. Um, who, who actually put this on the agenda?
We did, and it was last year you brought this up and we missed this, I believe.
Right.
Um, and we didn't get the right proclamation number. We'll put a proclamation number that we need to on this agenda item, so I would have to get with Molly and, uh, and if we can, maybe bring this back on the next agenda with the, a proper form proclamation so Molly can record it properly.
Um, can't we, um, can't we just defer this a bit and have Molly give us the number and we approve it today? Point of that, let's just defer it and you get the number for us?
I have, do we have a new one? Is what I have is I have the twenty-one oh one, the, the proclamation from last year. Is what I have, do you want to use that same number?
No, twenty-twenty-two. It was twenty, yeah, twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, the only one that I've been given is, uh, is the one from the previous year. So if we have one.
We do currently have one.
Okay.
It's just twenty-twenty-three dash zero one. Yeah. No, this is the first proclamation of the year, so it would be twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so can I go ahead and make a motion? Okay, I think it's great that we're timely. So even, even if we don't have it from anyone, it is extremely important. So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve proclamation number twenty-twenty-two dash zero one, declaring January twenty-twenty-two as National Radon Action Month in Lander County, Nevada. Whereas many residents of Lander County don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of lung cancer among smokers and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates twenty-one thousand people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, and lung and bronchus cancer kill more in a year than any other cancer. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Lander County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four piciaries per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking, half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas University of Nevada Radiance Extension is Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health and the EPA support efforts to encourage all Lander County residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated ra-, levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, the Lander County Commission does hereby proclaim January two thousand twenty-two as National Radon Action Month in Lander County, Nevada, adopted this thirteenth day of January two thousand twenty-two, and authorize our chair to sign.
So do we, do we have a problem with radon within?
Oh, yes, we've had several that have been identified. And interestingly enough, um, sometimes you do your home and you might have radon under one room, but not throughout the other rooms. So even if you've tested, they want you to test again in a different area.
I mean, is there a public, I mean, as far as?
Well, we need to, to contact Cooperative Extension and ask them if they can get our, our tests out.
Residents of Lander County contacted to say, hey, this can be an issue and we're here to assist you.
Right.
You know, rather than just posting something up at the post office.
Right. No, we, we need, we need to contact Cooperative Extension and ask them if they can get us the test kits. And we have at least passed the proclamation, hopefully, if I get a second.
Yeah, Cooperative Extension has offered test kits and nice coffee mugs too, but I don't know where, where they're at. Okay, Patty made the motion. Brian seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody voted aye?
Bert, thank you for putting that on. And would you contact, um, Cooperative Extension and see if we can get our testing supplies here and in Austin too? Thank you.
Number six, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the prof-, professional engineering services proposal from Day Engineering for Millard Fillmore, Norman Lane, and Sunset Paving Improvements in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Finally getting out there, huh?
Yep.
Um, I've got a question. Uh, how many miles, whatever, is involved with this project?
All combined?
Yeah. Just wondering how much it costs a mile to repay?
Gosh, I have that number in my head too.
Brand new road's roughly a million dollar.
Yeah, for a mile, for a mile.
A brand new road is roughly a million dollars to, foot-based to
Okay, but
build it, and that's a very rough number, but that's the number that typically is
We're just going to repave an existing road, right?
I don't know.
And is it just the, is it just the engineering services?
Yeah, that's just the engineering service. But on your road, on Norman Lane, we're, we're actually building a new road, extending it out to Hilltop.
Okay.
Cause, yeah, cause right now they only have the one entrance in, and if something ever happens to block that off, they're basically got to go through the dirt, yeah.
Just like getting out the alley, right?
Yes, 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 sir.
When you get a chance to measure.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. They are measured actually. I just don't have the number in my head. I apologize for that.
I will make a motion that we approve the professional engineering services proposal from Day Engineering for Millard Fillmore, Norman Lane, and Sunset Paving Improvements, um, for time and materials, T and M, in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand.
Sure. Patty made the motion. Kathy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think I, do I need to amend that motion so that we have, um, authorized the Director of Public Works to sign? I, I will amend my motion. Um, do I need to read it again or can I just add it? Okay, I'm adding that we authorize the Public Works Director to sign. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Take the litigation meeting now before number seven.
Okay, folks, we're going to have a litigation meeting. It's going to be a little while. Don't go away. Number seven, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove A, extension of subdivision settlement, participation forms, and release pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries. One Nevada Agreement previously agreed upon a part, participation in settlements with one, the McKeeson as listed as Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement and two to the State of Nevada and opioid manufacturer dependment, depend, defendant, Jansen and Johnson, Jansen, Johnson, and Johnson as listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement and B, execution of an amendment number one to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries regarding a reduction in attorney fees to the One Nevada Agreement for purposes of these two settlements only and ask the Chair to serve. Read the agreement in? Read the agreement in? No?
But that would be, the motion would be basically
Okay. Okay. Right. So, will you make a motion?
No, just so you do not.
Number seven.
I'll make a motion that we approve, A, execution of subdivision settlement, participation forums and releases pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement on allocation of opioids recoveries. One Nevada Agreement previously agreed upon participation in settlements with one, the State of Nevada and opioid distributor defendants. AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation, Carden Health, and McKesson as listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement and two, the State of Nevada and opioid manufacturer defendant, Jansen, Johnson, and Johnson as is listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement and B, execution of an amendment number one to One Nevada Agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries regarding a reduction in attorney fees on the One Nevada Agreement for purposes of these two settlements only and ask the Chair to sign.
I'll second.
Brian made the motion, Kathy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, no one objected. I'll sign that out. Number eight, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, a parcel map application for Foreman Barnes LLC. This is a merger, re-subdivision, and easement, relinquishment per NRS 278 of parcel 13C of a parcel map, number 280071 and lot 17, and parcel map number 183519 located within a portion of Section 14 Township 32N and Range 44E APN 010-280-40. This was approved at the Planning Commission, December 29th with known conditions.
Good morning Commissioners, Kate McConville, Planning Coordinator for the Record.
Everything's good.
Aaron Martinez, Lander County Engineer for the Record. Commissioners, this item in front of you today did get approved by the Planning Commission. One item that you'll want to note is there's an easement relinquishment on the north side of this parcel. On the map, if you're looking at this map here, on the north side here, we have an existing 60-foot right-of-way that perpetuates east to west, extending from what I believe is called Faded Sage Drive. And it looks, it appears that the master plan approach for this area was to have this east-to-west continuation of that roadway from Faded Sage continuing on through the remaining parcels. On this merger, re-subdivision application, they're taking that easement from the north side and they're going to be placing it kind of centrally in the parcel. In the next map, you'll see that better conveyed to where Mountain Sage Drive is still going to perpetuate east to west from Faded Sage, but essentially it would create a jog, so coming up Faded Sage, you would then catch this Mountain Sage Drive over to the next right-of-way, then go north a little bit, and then continue on the east-to-west as its master plan. So, in the past, I think that the Planning Commission wasn't really aware of these easements being relinquished, and so part of the direction from the County Manager's Office was for us to go through and help these applications and ensure that we're not relinquishing easement without the Commissioners' authority. Obviously, no one has the authority to do that but the County Commissioners. And so we've been catching things like that on these applications. This one here, we recommend approval because ultimately it's still getting the end goal that I think the county's looking for of having access to these parcels. And then also I think that it assists the applicant in further doing their development and what's conducive with their goals. And so with that, I, we do recommend the approval of this application.
So if it goes into the, the, re-subdivide into five parcels and we're following the NRS on it, right?
There were actually two parcels. This first map was a merger and re-subdivision, which took one smaller parcel and merged it with a larger parcel, so that we actually originated with two parcels. And in the end result being, we are creating, instead of the one smaller parcel, we're creating a five-acre-plus parcel there instead of the two and a half, so we're actually, we're lessening the density from what was originally there with the acreage that's available. And then the road easement goes away on this one, comes back in the next map.
In the pipe, okay, thank you.
So this helps access?
It, it allows, it helps create a larger parcel where there was a smaller one, and so the density becomes just slightly lower than where it was. It does change the access by locating it farther east one lot, correct?
Farther south.
Further south, excuse me. Correct.
That's correct. Anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the parcel map application for Foreman Barnes LLC. The merger, re-subdivision, and easement relinquishment per NRS 278 of parcel 13C of parcel map 280071 and lot 17 of parcel map 183519. This is located within a portion of Section 14 Township 32N and Range 44E APN 010-280-40. And for the record, it was approved on the planning, by the Planning Commission on December 29th, 2021.
Patsy made the motion and Brian seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Passing unanimously, no objections. Agenda item done, for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove, parcel map application from Foreman Barnes LLC. This is a division of one parcel into two parcels, D1 being 5.01 acres and D2 being 5.80 acres located within the portion of Section 14 Township 32N and Range 43E APN 010-280-20. This was approved by the Planning Commission on December 29th, 2021, no conditions.
In line with the previous application. As we discussed, the original application merged all of these parcels together and then re-subdivided them. This application here has been subdividing parcel B, which would be here, which then falls in line with the NRS components, and the County Surveyor has reviewed this application for approval.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the parcel map application for Foreman Barnes LLC. This is a division of one parcel, two parcel, D1 being 5.1, 5.01 acres, and each one being 5.80 acres located within a portion of Section 14 Township 32 North and Range 44 East APN 010-280-20. And just for a note, this was approved by the Planning Commission, uh, that's on December 29th, 2021, no conditions.
I'll second the motion.
Brian made the motion, Patsy seconded it, all in favor? Aye, no one objected?
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Number 10, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove expenditures for administration of local database, workstation server, and printer to comply with local and state election regulations in an amount not to exceed $16,000. Richard Green to explain these expenditures. Richard, you brew air.
Hello Commissioners, Richard is out, so Molly Gonzalez for the record, I'll be addressing this. So what it is, is we're asking for is, it's the workstations we need in our office to maintain all of our voter registration on a daily basis that's going, going to be compatible with all the new ESNS stuff we just got, and it's going to meet all the security and everything that they're requiring.
Any questions?
This was only again for Commissioners, and we didn't have the, the specific amount at that time.
Yeah, we didn't have the backup.
And it's been put in front of you again, and in an amount not to exceed $16,000.
We did have this in the budget though, right?
We don't have it in, like in Sullivan for the record, we don't have it in the budget, but I had talked to Sadie previously, and we do have the money. We still have money left over from when we went to our new Tyler system, when we got rid of ADS. So we're going to use the remainder of that money for this new software for the Clerk's office.
So they do have money in the budget, just not specifically for this, got it? That's a good sign, since you want it right away and not next July, right?
Right.
This is very important.
Yes, we need this right away.
Otherwise, nothing else will work.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the expenditures for administration of local database, workstation, server, and printer to comply with the local and state elections regulations in an amount not to exceed $16,000, and this is for our Lander County Clerk's office.
Patsy, Patsy made the motion, Kathy seconded it first. So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, no one objected, passing unanimously, thank you very much. Number 11, come on up, Donnie.
Don Prince, Public Works Director. Okay, this is just an update of what we've got going on. Let's start with the El Brick Road. They finally started lowering the manholes over there on the valve lids, uh, the, to do the paving over there. They're planning on keeping the sub grave as it is and just raise the road up a little bit. And they just started, I believe, yesterday on that, which is good, finally. Our forest main that we've been working on for so long, we finally got our permits from the NDOT and the railroad. We just signed papers on that yesterday, and got us getting a check going. So now we're just waiting on NDEP, and then we're going to do a pre-bid on the 18th and have a bid opening on the 25th on that, so that'll be nice, get that going, which will, then in turn, we can start on this safety list station and bring hopefully a sewer line across and lessen the load over there. The golf course, everything's done on the golf course pond now, except for the electrical. We got the new pumps and everything installed, the, the ponds all there. So once we get electrical, then we can fill it up and turn everything on, we should be good to go.
Donnie, we have fences around those?
No, we don't. We got the temporary fencing we could put up.
Are you going to put fences up?
We'll probably put some temporary fences up here if we, if it, I don't think we had a freezing problem out there this year. I didn't see one, but.
We just had some kids out there on the ice this winter.
Were they on there this year too? I never heard about it, so. We have all the fencing on, so we'll have to get it put back up then if that's the case. Yeah, yeah, I agree, so. But it's going to, it's going to be a substantial cost to put permanent fencing up there, and I don't know if a person wants to do that or not. We can look into that, I can get a price for the budget for that. So, I mean, we, a nice decorative fence, it looked nice out there, so. Well, Sunset and Fillmore, we just went over that, it's just, it's going to block the bitchers and.
So, from a design perspective, the, the Safe Rusted Schools Project Phase Two was underway. You guys approved that for construction. That project stopped obviously for winter purposes, and it'll be firing back up. Phase Three, which is this portion of the community over here, will be the next approach, and that design is already in implementation, and we're hoping probably by July 1st, when that secondary budget gets approved, that that project would go out to bid. We have the West Community project that's being developed at a mass design scale. That's basically everything west of Broad Street. It's broken up into four phases right now. That project entails sewer and water infrastructure. The Commission had come through and given us approval for the fiber optic component as well, and so we've added that to the design. We're hoping to have that out to bid probably mid-February for Phase One of that project. I think Phase One's going to be very critical because a lot of our infrastructure stems, especially our gravity-fed infrastructure, stems from the north and, and then goes upgrade to the south. So we'll be starting on the north end and going south, southerly, and we're hoping to install new storm drain systems as well and trying to replace some of those infiltrators that are in that neighborhood. And so we are looking at storm drain capacity and actually a much broader storm drain approach for that area. We just have nowhere to put the water, it's so flat. It's really an engineering issue for us as we're trying to figure out where to put this water and how to do it. There's an existing detention basin over there that's just not deep enough, but if we go any deeper, we're in the groundwater. So we're going to have to get a little innovative on our storm water as we go forward, and we're hoping to try to get a better handle on that for you in regards to the storm.
Is there any way you can hook up to the storm drains on Second Street? Get it down to Front Street and then out?
Yeah, I, I'll have to look into that a little further, Commissioner, I'm not exactly familiar with that storm drain you're discussing.
The French drain stuff just, when, when it rains, when we get a rainstorm, those French drains, they don't work.
Yeah.
No, they're just slow, once they get filled, they're slow, it takes a while or so.
And as you go.
In the past, we have attempted to hook into them, but they're NDOT drains and they've not been very partial to allowing us to hook into them.
Oh, the, the storm drains on Front Street are NDOT, we'd have to get permission to tie in, huh?
Correct.
And I think our best bet is to.
Possibly one of the projects that we, you know, tell NDOT we need partnership with.
Okay, I can look into that, make that note real quick.
Because I have one drain across the street from me at Mel Langer's house that goes across the street to Anchos and then out to Front Street, and that drain's pretty good. But there's another one right across from Mel's house, it's a French drain, and it'll get filled up, and you can see the air bubbles coming up in between the concrete curb and the asphalt. That can't be good.
Yeah, that's where it's released my heart.
And you know, our high water table in this area just doesn't help those infiltrators either, you know? So they're, they're an approach to help fix those areas, and I think they've done a decent job in some relief, but to do the massive storm drain approach that we're looking at, like on the West Community, it takes a pretty large undertaking, where we have to rip up the entire road, relocate utilities that are in the way of that gravity line, and.
We just got new roads still.
So we're hoping to do all that underground infrastructure for any of those roads to get built, so that's, that's the goal.
I have a question on one of our future projects, and that's actually our tennis court that needs resurfacing in Austin. I'm wondering whether you think we might have enough to actually do that this summer before our budget? Because if we wait for our budget and don't start till after July, we've lost a good part of the summer, and there's a lot of things that's used for us. So I wondered, when you're looking at your budget, do you think there's any way we might be able to get that done prior?
I believe that was in the plans to go this spring, to get them working on that this spring, we'll have to opt for it.
So we'll have it ready for summer, good?
Well, hopefully it'll be done in the summertime and then, so.
Okay, at least we don't have to wait for July 1st, right?
It should be in this budget year, hopefully.
No, it is in this budget.
I mean, it is, hopefully they'll be done this budget year, so.
Not out to bid, but we have a budget to get, so he's just got to get it rolling.
Great, thank you.
And with, with that, I'm not exactly familiar with that, but I was understanding that the other tennis court needed resurfacing also, is that correct? Was that the goal? So we'd probably want to do them both at the same time, because those, those are specialty type folks that do that resurfacing, it's not cheap. And so I think it'd be in our best interest to try to do two projects to maybe get a reduction in overall cost per square foot, if you will, by having the continuity of both those projects at the same time. So I'll assist Don and try to evaluate that.
Any more questions?
Okay, carrying on. Down in Austin, we've been working, I've been working with Marty on the booster station project, and we run into a little dilemma about, I haven't enough space to put this thing right next to what we have. And so we, we found some property that's just diagonal across the corner. It's county property, it's just a little sliver, and there's more than enough room for what we need to do. So we'll, we're going to relocate it, and that should be coming out to bid here shortly, so. That, we got that going on down there. Then that fence at the swimming pool, they supposed to be there this week sometime to start on that, hopefully. If they haven't started already. If they haven't started already. Any other questions?
Keep up the good work, man.
Tried.
How did we do with the snow?
The snow? The snow kept us really busy. We didn't, there wasn't really enough in town in Battle Mountain to plow, but we sanded there every day, we went through tons and tons of sand. Austin's got a lot of snow. They plowed and sanded, and plowed and sanded, and we kept up, though, I believe, so.
I guess if you live there, you know how to get up on a hill, the easy way.
I'd want to go down there and watch some plow someday, someday. That's gotta be real interesting. It's like a toboggan ride. All righty, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I guess at this point, we'll open up for public comment on non-agenda items?
Correspondence.
Oh, correspondence. Correspondence for future agenda items.
I do believe we have a health board meeting convened at the next agenda. I think that's what Dr. Ross has requested. Other than that, I can give, yes, I should have given an update on this one, but there's a few things that we're hoping happens as far as getting assigned, that's something that I'd like to update on right now, it's about the same as the other people.
Yeah, we're, did you say we're gonna have an update from Dr. Ross?
Yes, that is the hope. You guys will convene a health board meeting? That's what Dr. Ross is requesting.
And have Dr. Wilcourt here physically, hopefully?
Yeah, I think so. We'll see what Dr. Ross wants to do, he's the chairman.
Along with that, Bert, along the same way, I had forwarded you the email that I got from Kim Donahue.
Yes.
Do you remember that? Did she want to be a part of that, too, or does she want something separate on the agenda?
I think something separate, but wanted to meet with us first, so...
Meet with us, like an agenda item?
No, 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 no. I think she wanted to meet with, with myself, with Brandy, Dr. Ross.
Oh, okay, so it's not an agenda, you're taking care of it?
Correct.
Okay, just for the board, yeah.
Nevada Health Centers, they're the ones who service Austin twice a month, and so they're having some difficulties and may not be able to do that in the future, so we're hoping to maybe integrate with them and create a good service that will provide for everybody with our local doctor and kind of maybe mix and match. But we'll see how that meeting goes, and I'll update you guys on that when we get there.
We'll open it up for public comment on non-agenda items? I see no public comment. Entertainer motion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
This conference is no...